First item on the agenda is an exec session that we have a scheduled appointment for 9:30. So if I could get a motion to go into exec session.
Mr. Chair, I move we recess a special session of the Board of Supervisors and convene executive session.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I just have it. Thank you. We'll be back as soon as we're done with this exec session. We don't have another exec session, do we? We're returning. We're no more exec sessions.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move we return executive session and reconvene the special session of the Board of Supervisors.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I just have it. Thank you very much. I want to, I do want to kind of preempt this meeting today with, with a statement. There's a lot of energy, things on these comprehensive plan amendments. It's, the Board of Supervisors has requested of staff to bring in the power providers and, and do a presentation here in the next few weeks. Don't know exactly. We don't have it scheduled yet, but we want to understand what their demands are, what their future holds, and where they think they're going to need power and how much. So, but anyway, I want to let everybody know that that is a, you know, this, this has a lot of components about energy in it. We're still learning about what's needed and where and when. So stay tuned. We'll have probably a work session with that and we'll invite the ones that we think that, or whoever wants to provide their input to the Board of Supervisors as we move forward for energy in the future. So I just wanted to preempt this meeting with that little statement. So second item on the agenda is a presentation from honoring, hiring, and helping our heroes. Hope, Kim, good to see you. Always like to hear how you guys are doing with your operation.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Is, is the clicker, I use this? Okay, cool. So, good morning Chairman Miller, Supervisor Vitell, Supervisor McClure, Supervisor Goodman, and Supervisor Sertie. We're really honored to be here to give you an update. It's been a while and we've had some really awesome things happening for our organization. But before I start, I'd like to introduce who's here with me today. I have a board member, Jim Sylvester, who is also one of Pinal County's Veterans, Arizona Veterans Hall of Fame. And I have our other board member, Crystal McKenna, and our first hired staff since we started in 2011, Suzanne Payan. We were so excited. We have people now, yeah. So I just want to come in and let you guys know, I'm going to give you some history as well because some of you aren't familiar with HOHP. But we started, actually, we were born in the Pinal County Arizona At Work Office, 1015 East Florence Boulevard in Casa Grande, where we first started with Arizona At Work. At that time, Adeline Allen, who was the Housing Director, and she was also over Arizona At Work, and myself, and Udo Cook, he worked for, he was one of the board members as well as I for the Workforce Board, noticed that there were some issues with services to veterans in Pinal County. And so we started doing some different things in the center. I hope I do this right. Okay, yes. So at Arizona Workforce at 1015 East Florence Boulevard, one of the first things that we did was we opened a veterans area in the one-stop support service area. We had an official flag come in from the JROTC. We had, actually you'll see Supervisor Snyder was there with us when we first started, and we had Mayor Jackson there and several members from the community. And at that time, we also went ahead and honored CCA, Core Civic was CCA at that time. They hire a lot of veterans for the, their facilities. So we had a really nice event, did a ribbon cutting ceremony so that the veterans had their own area in that one-stop area that they could go to and get information. And that's how we started in 2011. We really enjoyed doing the things that we did at that facility. And then when Arizona At Work moved over to Florence Street, we were able to secure part of that building thanks to this Board of Supervisors. We opened our first Veterans Center and it was connected to Arizona At Work at that time. And you'll see, we've got Supervisor Miller hanging out in there. And it was just a really awesome grand opening because we were working out of our vehicles up until that time. We were handing out food boxes. We were doing intakes, lunch hours after work. And this center allows a place for the veterans to go to get services. And we just built, built HOHP over the last 14 years to what it is today. So that was a big, a big jump for us. And it was a dream just to have a place for veterans to go. Because in Pinal County, in the area, a lot of veterans at that time didn't know where to go to get services. They didn't even know there was a VA clinic in Casa Grande, and it'd been there for years and years and years, and it still is there. So in 2022, the Arizona At Work moved over to Cottonwood Lane, and we had to, we had to move. There wasn't enough room for us in that building, but we were able to secure our own building at 100 East Florence Boulevard in Casa Grande. And we had our own parking lot now, so it was really cool. We had our own place for everybody to come in and, and park. We actually take some of other people's parking. But the building, we've been there for three years now. When you come into the building, we now have a Veterans Museum, and these are some of the things that you will see when you come in. Everything that's in that museum has been donated by veterans from across Pinal County. They still bring me more stuff. My office has stuff. And we have a collection of GI Joe that started from, you'll see some of them there, from World War I and all the way through. There's still two boxes. I haven't been able to get up on the walls yet, but we have Vietnam, World War II. We have some uniforms in there that have been donated. The oldest two are from World War II. In the bottom left picture, you'll see one up on the wall. That is a World War II female veteran, Carol Key. She was from this area. She's also recognized in the US Women Veterans Museum. And her granddaughter, I'm going to cry, you guys know how I am, I cry, brought her uniform in, and a picture that is, that is shows of her at the museum. So that's, you guys are welcome to come. Please come walk through. When you come into the building, up in the top left corner, we have designed it to walk through the building is a walk through history. So when you come through the, the main door, World War I is on the right-hand side. World War II is on the left-hand side. And as you make your way down the hallway, you will see Korea, and you'll also see Vietnam pictures up, drawings that have been made. And we also have a collection of items. When we had the wall that heals in 2019, come into Casa Grande, the Vietnam Wall, we, there are all the items that were left at the wall. We have everything there from that exhibit. When you go around to the other side, we have Iraq, Afghanistan, and also Desert Storm. So as you make your way through the building, you'll be walking through, walking through history, a walk through time. At the center, we have Arizona Department of Veteran Services. We have a Benefits Council there two times a week. Pretty soon, we might have three in the facility. They're trying to get them trained. But last year, there were 459 disability claims filed by veterans from across the county. And they file their service-connected claim. They can also help them with getting their medals, getting their medal, their medical paperwork from the VA. We have a Veterans Cup of Joe Coffee Club every Tuesday from 8:00 to 9:30. That's very well attended. There can be 30 to 35 veterans attending that from all over. They come from Maricopa, Arizona City, Coolidge, Eloy, they come to attend the coffee club. And it's just a time for them to talk and share things with each other. And I give them updates on what's happening around the area. We have a peer support group on Thursday mornings from 8:00 to 9:30. We have veterans-only AA group Thursday evening from 4:00 to 5:00. That group's been together about eight years now, and they are constantly bringing in new, new members to come in. And they find that a lot easier than being in a regular AA group because there's things that veterans talk about that you're not able to talk about with other, other people. We have an Honor Guard team that we established over five years ago. They help with hospice, do hospital visits, rehab, and pinning ceremonies. And over the last five years, our Honor Guard has pinned over 500 veterans from across Pinal County. Many of them are hospice, are in hospice. And I'll share one story with you. That means a lot to me. We had a Vietnam veteran that had cancer, and he knew that our Honor Guard was coming to give him his 50th anniversary commemorative Vietnam pin. And he kept asking his wife, when are they coming? When are they coming? And so they went on a Friday, and he was still awake. He was waiting for them. And two of our Honor Guard team went in. They presented him his 50th anniversary pin. And about an hour after they left, he passed away. He was waiting for that pin. I believe in my heart, he was ready to go home because he knew he was appreciated before he went home. That's one of the many stories from all of the pinings that we've been able to do. You should have put that up there earlier. I'm sorry I get emotional, but this stuff means a lot to me. We started a women veterans group. She served. They've been meeting for two years now. And they're doing a really good job of cooking, connecting with women veterans. And they have won the Casa Grande Veteran State Parade for the last two years for the best veterans entry. But they work together to help support each other because that's another special population that they need to be able to talk about things that happened to them while they served in the military. We have guitars for vets. We have a writers group, HOHP Eagle Shadow Writers. We have an emergency food pantry for veterans that need to come in and get food. That one's very well stocked by the Elks Lodge in Casa Grande. And then we also have emergency services. So when a veteran comes in and they need help with their rent or their utilities, fix their vehicle, insurance, we look at everything that they need help with, and we try to help with that need. And if it's more than what we're able to provide, we get them out to other providers to help take care of their emergency services. And I can tell you about three weeks ago, we had a homeless veteran family with seven children. And we worked to get them connected with services. They are housed now. And we did food. We gave them gas cards, extra gift cards to buy diapers because they had a baby. So we were able to meet their needs and get them housed. And now we're trying to work on helping the husband get some employment. And those are other things that we do as far as emergency services. Each year, over 4,000-plus veterans come to the center. And they're coming from all over Pinal County. We've had probably four from San Manuel this year that have come in for services. So they are coming in. We will do an intake for them over the phone. If they're unable to drive in, we will do intakes with them over the phone. But they come in and they get their emergency services. They can get connected for their Arizona Department of Veteran VA Benefits Counseling, just to talk with each other, coffee club, everything that we have there, it's more like their home. It's a place for them to go. And sometimes they just come in and hang out, or they need help with something. We've also been very closely involved with Veterans Court since it started. So we're attend, we attend Veterans Court twice a month. We work very closely with Judge Neal is the judge right now, and with Genesis. So we work closely with the veterans that are going through intensive probation through Veterans Court. I bet you guys don't know who this is, do you? Eagle One. And I want to say thank you because we wouldn't have Eagle One without this board. We got Eagle One in 2015. As you guys can see on the top, it was Pinal County Clinic, Health Department Clinic. And we raised the money to wrap. And every year, for the veterans program that you guys have, we bring Eagle One over here and park him out there in the parking lot. But it was a great day when we got that because it goes out across the county. We'll be sending him back out in October. The summer bunts are a little bit hot to be out running around the county, but in October, he will be back out on the road. Here's pictures from when we did a ribbon cutting here with Eagle One. And we're very proud of what we've been able to do with the Mobile Veterans Center. And that's probably served over 6,000 veterans over the time that we have had it, going out to the different communities. So we thank Pinal County and Gila River Indian Community. They gave us a grant to get Eagle One up and started. Our stand-down, we started in 2013 with the first Pinal County Veterans Stand Down. It was out at the fairgrounds. And we had 125 veterans that came out there. We had no idea what we were doing, but we were challenged to do it for Pinal County, and we jumped in with both feet. And this year, we'll be doing the 13th Annual Stand Down over at our Transitional Center. That year, we also formed our nonprofit board and just started moving forward. Now we see probably 350 or more veterans that attend the stand-down. And when we had COVID, we went ahead and still had the stand-down, but we had to put the panels in six feet apart, wear a mask. We did the whole thing so that the veterans would, during that time, it was very stressful. And at that time, veterans really need to have access to their services. So we continued through COVID to have our stand-down. There's some more pictures from stand-down. This year's stand-down is October 11th from 9:00 to 2:00. We are having an opening ceremony at 9:00 AM, and I invite all of you to come if you'd like to come out and, and hang out with us out there. This year, I have my fingers crossed, we have a veteran out of Casa Grande that never received his Bronze Star. And we're working with Congressman Crane's office to get his Bronze Star. And if everything falls into place, it's going to be presented to him at that ceremony. So we'd really like to have you guys there if you can take some time out and come, come hang out. And we usually have over 50 providers out there to take care of our veterans. Haircuts, showers. Our main focus is homeless, but we also open it to all veterans because it's like a one-day stop and shop where they can talk to the VA and housing, education, employment. We have a lot of providers out there to help take care of our veterans.
Steve.
Transition Center.
Supervisor.
It's been a long time.
Kim, real quick.
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Sertie, I think, wants to ask a question.
Okay.
Where's the home base of the motorhome? And is it doing something? How often?
Right now, it's, we have it parked at the, a park and shade so we can protect the wrap on it. And it'll, it's not been, we've been going to events, but it hasn't, we put it, haven't had it out steady yet. And that's what we're going to be starting to do again in October. But it'll be going out. We've had a couple of our volunteers going out to make sure we have all of our sites still set in each of the communities across Pinal.
But that's in Casa Grande is where it stays?
It's stationed in Casa Grande, yes.
But if anybody in Superior, Kearney, outlying, they make a request, it'll come, right?
Yes, absolutely. We get requests all the time for people to bring it to their events.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the Transition Center, HOHP Pinal County Veterans Transition Center, actually should have moved this down, but we started a Transition Center team. And Horizon donated or gifted this building to us in 2019. And we had a signing ceremony. We did our first flag raising in 2019. But it's taken several years to get the money that we need to open up the facility. In 2022, we got a grant from Arizona Department of Veteran Services to fix the roof and put windows in. In 2023, we had people adopt a room so that we could go through and get the first floor completed. So the first floor is done. We also got a grant from Gila River to renovate the kitchen. So there's all brand-new commercial equipment in the kitchen. And thanks to Pinal County, we got a grant to build a larger laundry room last year as we're moving closer to being able to open. We also received, and this is one of the exciting things for us, a $1.7 million grant from Arizona Department of Housing so that we can finish the second floor and add 15 more rooms and have money for operations and staffing. So that was a huge, a huge step for us. We finally got funded. Took a year to get all of the paperwork done for it, but we finally got our first drawdown this year in March. And we've got new computers for the resource room. There's a wood shop out there now for veterans that want to go learn how to work with wood and create and work with stuff. This was our ribbon signing, our paper signing for the facility. I can say that Senator Sinema was very instrumental in helping us get the facility. So we had a signing ceremony out there. There's pictures from our first flag raising ceremony. We had a lot of people out there, probably about 200 came out for that event. And we continue to have events out there. This is what it looked like when we first got it. My board members thought I was a nut because they were like, the weeds were up to your armpits and the windows were boarded up. But volunteers from all of these communities came out and started helping us clean up, clean up the weeds, clean up the whole area so it would look nice. If you drive down McCartney now, you'll see a very different looking building. And it's not pink. When we first got the building, it was pink. The floors inside were pink. So everything looks really ni, veterans are happy. They didn't want a pink building. This is some new pictures from now. We have flag poles up in front of the building now. We also have an area for our events where we raise all of the flags. This was from last year's stand-down. And we had Congressman Eli Crane came out to speak to the veterans. He's a Navy SEAL. He came out to talk to the veterans. And we're just, we're just getting ready, we're just getting started. We're excited to have the funding that we need to get this center open so that we can serve our veterans and they don't have to leave the county to get transitional services. Any questions?
Any questions, board? No.
Okay.
I'll make the comment that you're doing fantastic work out there, Kim, and thank you for.
Thank you.
For having that concern for our veterans. I don't, I've said it many a time, we don't do enough for our veterans in the United States of America.
No, we don't. I agree.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And if, I would like to ask you guys if you could please come because we'd like to present these challenge coins to you.
Okay. But I think Supervisor Goodman, you have something?
No, I just wanted to add that I think because of your guys' leadership over there in Casa Grande, Santan Valley has actually caught hold on and has a really good veterans group that's been working very effectively.
Yes.
In our community and helping out those veterans. So, and I, I attribute that, a lot of that to what you've done over there in Casa Grande. And then also Coolidge is doing a pretty good job too. So, thank you.
And we all partner with each other. If we don't have enough money for something, we all work together. We even work with Veterans in Need in Maricopa. We all partner together to get those veterans taken care of.
Beth.
Can you guys come up here for me, please?
Sure.
Amy?
Sure. Kevin around? Does he, do I get a photo of this? Getting a little chubby there.
So on behalf of HOHP, we're presenting you with our challenge coin. And it has our emblem on the front. And on the back of it, you will see all of the emblems of the military. And that's how the military gives you your challenge coins. That's right. And it's also a competition. You see who has the highest ranking coin on who's going to buy a beer. Thank you, guys.
I missed the whole presentation, so I'm not sure how we want to. Everybody needs to come in much tighter. Because we need to have a couple rows here.
Oh.
Yep, come in there. There you go. There, it's better. That's a little better. Let's do, I don't like this. Well, you're in a great spot.
Scooch?
I think, I think so. There you go. That's. All right, everybody. Here we go. Big smiles. Three, two. I'm going to do a couple here because somebody always blinks the camera. Three, two. One more just because you guys look so great. Three, two, one. There we go.
Yeah. I agree with that one.
What you guys didn't know is Natasha said I could have two hours, but I told her no. Just kidding.
Thank you. All right, everybody. To the script here. The next item is work session presentation update on Board of Supervisors on the elections. Dana, you're up.
Good morning Chairman Miller, Vice Chairman McClure, members of the board, Dana Lewis, Pinal County Recorder, here to give you an update on where we're at for potential reprecincting for Pinal County, not to be confused with redistricting. So we came to you several months ago in regards to the growth of the county and the concern we had with several things. One, ever blowing best, a wait time at a polling location. And then also always looking forward that when we do these processes, you know, our precincts, it's all based on, you know, certain parts of law. And one of them is precinct commitmen. And we are, you know, have to put those persons on a ballot in the event that if there's 20 seats and people turn in signature petitions for 22, they would need to go to the ballot. It's very difficult to do that if I don't have enough space on the ballot because 22 names on a ballot becomes cumbersome and falls into additional rows. So one of the ways that we mitigate that problem is to look at reprecincting. So we're going to go through some quick slides. Of course, we are governed by the Arizona revised statutes and the Elections Procedures Manual. In 16411, it talks about the day that we need to accomplish this is no later than October 1st in an odd year, which would then make sure that if you were to approve this in September, that it would go into effect for January 2nd of the even year of 2026. And then also making sure that we're mitigating any wait times at the polls. Some basic information for people in. Some basic information for people in the galley would be the calculation of how we identify how many precinct committeemen are established at a precinct. There's some math for you. And then also wanting to know that we have been working hand-in-hand with community development, the Assessor's Office, and then members of the community as we're watching this unprecedented growth in Pinal County. And we've been tracking since 2016. We went into redistricting in the county as required by the state in 2020, but quickly found out just a few years in that we might have, maybe not had projected enough. And so we're working with community development for any of the areas we call hotspots. So areas where currently I have, you know, about 6,000 voters attached to any given precinct that could potentially implicate us going over our wait times of no more than 30 minutes at any polling location. From the last presentation that we presented to now, there is only a few changes. I don't know if the gentlemen on the board were able to go through the presentation, but I'm going to kind of give you a brief overview. From the last presentation, the only changes were we omitted two new precincts, looking at the numbers, the lines, and then turnout. We were able to omit two of those, knowing that growth going forward into our next redistricting in 2030, we would be in a good space. We adjusted one of the precinct lines to encapsulate appropriately and not create any type of an island area. And then five of the precincts, we swapped with their original precinct just to ensure that historical information were kept. And one of the most popular changes was changing the names. We did take and go into voter education working groups since our first presentation to the board. And the results were mostly name changes and a couple of line changes. I'm really impressed, the amount of community members that came to the voter education working groups to ask about this process, how we came up with the numbers, where this growth is, where the projections were from community development. It was actually really wonderful to watch the civic engagement of our communities. Really want to do a shout-out to some people, again, because this doesn't work without our community. Bev Goldstein, Jody Stefan, Jen Hill's boss, Steve Hetzler, Rich Kessler, and Christine Hushen, just to name a few. We got a couple, like, you know, Mr. Vanderburgh at one of our meetings, asked some questions. But they actually went through in their districts and went through line by line, street by street. And then even brought to our attention some areas we didn't know existed that could be potentially polling locations in the future. If you'd like, I can pause and we can go through each one of the districts, one by one, or precinct by precinct. Or I can go through these fast, since you have a full agenda. It's to the pleasure of the Board.
If there's any questions, I'll stop you and ask, I think.
Okay.
Just rock and roll.
Rock and roll. So Precinct 118 proposed split to create a second precinct, 129, Coolidge West. Again, voter registration currently at 5,000. Projected growth to be 6,000. As you see during our Canvas presentation meetings, we're always talking about the turnout at the polls and how many people vote by mail. If we continue to see that, you know, 2/3 of the voters voting by mail, we're able to mitigate some of this. But still want to make sure you're aware that if I have 2,000 people show up and I'm using a tiny little community space, we could blast that deadline or that time wait period. And we don't want to do that in Pinal County. Precinct 80 split to make 115 homestead. Again, too many precinct seats. And the projected growth for this in the next four years is to 9,000. Precinct 96 split to be 130. We're right about 4,600. We have current enough polling locations for this that we could utilize. Precinct 102 split to make 128. This is one of the lines that had changed a little bit. 111 to become 111 and 119. Again, 7,000 voters projected for 111 if we did not split.
A 40% increase.
We've got to be over half a million.
Citizens, yes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. We're currently in active registrants, about 300,000, sir. The San Tan area, District 2. Precinct 28, you know, this is right around that Enquity area that we just saw with the latest election. We're able to drive in on these numbers again. Current voter registration number is 8,500 with this kind of little slot out there on the end. Brings it to 9,500. Precinct 68 will add to 131, and Occidental was the name. 71 proposed to split to 132, become Castle Gate. Precinct 85 split to be 120. This one is a little bit different. This area is very congested in San Tan Valley. And trying to make sure we're staying within our congressional legislative lines and making sure that we're bringing us back into those located precinct places. Right now, we have several locations that were voting out of precinct, and we'd really like to bring that back in. Precinct 86 split to be with 116. Again, projected growth, 7,700. Precinct 88, not as much, but we're seeing that it could project even more. So wanted to be safe on this one with precinct committeemen. Precinct 94 split to create 125. This is another big one. Precinct 95 split to have 126, San Tan Flats. Jump from 5,300 to 7,000. Precinct 98 split to 117, Ovation. 6,000 to a 9,000 jump. Precinct 108 split to be 134, The Ranches East. About a 600 jump, not as much as some of the other precincts. But again, trying to take into account some of those subdivisions. BOS District 3, the Costa Grande area. Precinct 113, right there, to split and be 121, The Ropes and Ranch. About a 1,500 growth in that area, sir. 39 split to be 122, Ghost Ranch. About 1,200. 41 split to 124, an area that wasn't previously being developed is now about 1,200 again. Precinct 99 split to 127, Costa Grande Desert Willow. This was one of the ones where we swapped names, 4,600 to 6,400. Precinct, our District 4, Florence area. Precinct 26 split to be 136, Indigo Sky. About 1,000 increase. Precinct 27 split 135, Wild Horse. Precinct 109, split with 118, Anthem West. That one's a big jump, too. For those of you know, Down Hunt Highway, it was just Anthem. And now it's like jumped across Hunt Highway and it's built it up all over there, too. So that was a lot. District 5, Apache Junction, sir. Again, this is that precinct committeeman. And these, this one is not an issue, but it's how big that precinct is and then the amount of area the voters have to drive. If we're able to reallocate that, then instead of having like a 45-minute drive to their polling location, we can fix that, and that has been a complaint for several years now. Precinct 40, split to 137. This is with the precinct committeeman seats. About a 600 growth in registrants. 45, split to become 138, AJ Saddlebutte. 59, split to 139, Cold Canyon Renaissance. Again, 1,100 growth there. And when I'm talking about growth, I'm talking about registration growth. I'm not talking about citizen growth or census data growth. Do we utilize that information when we're doing that? Absolutely. Of course we are. Because for every, you know, two citizens, we usually have at least one voter. So I think it would be remiss of us not to talk about costs so that you're aware when we go forward. I know nobody likes to talk about money, but I think it's part of the conversation during a work session. We can continue, at the current rate that we are at, confidently through 2028, continue to do what we call combined precincts. So what that means, precinct 5051, 52, the St. Mary's area. The amount of voters is very small. We have a facility that could definitely continue to house the voters in that area. We can continue to do that for many of these precincts. We've been able to work with the churches, work with the schools. And instead of being in a weight room, we're in the gymnasium. Instead of being in a small hall area, we're now in the fellowship area. So we're working with that, and we can continue to do that to mitigate any additional costs that would be incurred from needing additional equipment, poll pads, express votes, the ADA machines, the different equipment cages, of course, the ballot boxes, and then of course, the workers that we need to administer an election on Election Day. So the, between troubleshooters, poll workers, all of that, I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars. We can wait in splitting them and acquiring additional polling locations probably until we do redistricting in 2030. We've looked at this, we've been able to look at additional facilities to move out of one smaller facility and go to a larger facility. The cost, we will not be able to avoid. If the Board of Supervisors chooses to agree with this going into the September meeting, which it would be on the agenda for approval, would be the voter registration cost. And what is that is if I, if we do the represincting, I have to let everybody know that now, if they used to be in Precinct 22, now they're in Precinct 23, I need to let them know. And how we do that is with the voter registration cards, and then of course, heavy communications. Out of the 113 numbered precincts Pinal County currently has, we have 109 active precincts. That means through redistricting, over the course of the birth and life of Pinal County, we have precincts that have been ghosted. And that means that they're no longer anywhere in our systems. It's because now it was acquired by another precinct. You know, it was split. So we ghost those, so we have 109 live precincts. Of that, we have currently 94 polling locations. Of the 94 polling locations, 13 are combined. And like I said, we are confident that we believe with continuing to find larger facilities in these precincts, we can continue to combine most of these. It is required of us to inform you how many voter education working groups that we went through. We had three working groups. I've been out to three different other events out in the communities talking about represincting and was also discussed at several of the town halls. If you'd like, I can go back to any of the slides. Our team is here to answer questions. This again was just presentation update where we are from the original presentation. This will be an Agendized Board Meeting item for September 17th. That's all I have for you, Chairman Miller. I told you I'd go through it fast. I know you guys have a heavy docket today.
Can I ask a general question about...
Yeah, absolutely.
Nothing, it ties to you but not. If, if the President is able to get another census, would your department be involved in that, or would that all come from the feds and state?
So...
Because we, the county's actually been requesting one for different reasons, and I just wondered, is that something you need to worry yourself with?
Chairman Miller, Vice Chairman McCourt, Supervisor Serri, Members of the Board. We looked into, I think it was Prop 106, that identified the redistricting process at the state level. Was having some conversations, because I've heard this on social media. I don't know, of course, the Recorder's Office, the Elections Department works with the county's appointed redistricting committee. I was part of that process for the last one. I would continue to be part of it going forward. Yes, we work with, it's a team. But there would need to be some changes in law. So, right now, I don't believe that, that capacity exists. But again, I'm a recorder, not an attorney.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dana. Well done.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, we're on item number four, this work session. So, these are potential Comp Plan Amendments, potential. They're not voting on anything today, these are just presentations by staff only, I think, at this point in time, so. First case is BZPA 01125, La Osa.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman and Board Members. Sangita Deoker, Planning Supervisor. First giving you an overview of the work session for the proposed 2025 Major Comprehensive Plan Amendments. So to give perspective, the schedule for 2025 begins when the first set of aspects of public participation begin, which was June 9. May end, we receive all applications. And the first set of documents are shared with all agencies across the county. It's a 60-day agency review period which started, and it ended August 8. We had the work session with the planning and zoning July 17. And we are at the stage of work session with the Board sharing this information. The next upcoming public hearing would be September 4, which is the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting. We received seven in all, major comprehensive plan amendments proposals. The first one was withdrawn by the applicant on 24th of July. And the next six of them are largely green energy production. We have gas-fired power plants, we have a solar base, we have data centers. And we will go over each one shortly. To give a perspective of where all of these are located, you can see the county map. It is a concentration of four of the proposals along I-8 and a little north in the Maricopa, south of Maricopa. There's one which is on the northern central portion and one to the south. The northern portion one, which is at the Florence Junction, is the Silver King Solar. And to the south, along Red Rock, is the Osa, La Osa Project. And in the center ones are Griffin Energy and the other projects. I'm going to be just talking about these three major land use classifications that have been requested and the uses allowed. The reason why I'm saying is, this is the first time that we have received data centers in Pinal County. Most of the data centers that are located are largely in the Phoenix area, Phoenix Chandler and Glendale, Goodyear, along those sides. But this is the first time that we have received a couple of them. So, just to give you a perspective, we already are aware of utility-scale solar projects that classify under the land use classification for green energy production. For data centers, industrials, offices, business parks, warehousing, employment is the designation that has been classified. And for other power plants, landfills, solid waste transfer station, wastewater facilities, it is classified under the General Public Facilities and Services. So largely, these are the ones that have been requested. And I thought I would just share that as information. This is going to be presented in the last, so I'm going to go to the next one, which is the La Osa Project. And this is the project proposal for 3,374 acres. Basically, the current land use designations, there are three land use designations. It is very low-density residential, which is 0 to 1 dwelling units per acre. Moderate-low-density residential, which is 1 to 3.5 dwelling units per acre. And proposed open spaces. And the proposal... And the proposal is for employment, general public facilities, services, and open space. Location is along the Green Canal of the Santa Cruz Wash in the extended planning boundary south of the city of Eloy. We have the owners Verma Land, Verma Land OSA Ranch I-10, Sasco 370 LLC, and Sasco Road Casa Grande 3677 Acres LLC. Applicant agent, Rob Clank from Verma Land LLC, one of the largest land holdings in Arizona. To give you perspective, again, the location map as shown earlier is south of, central south of Penal County, shown by the red star, just besides the red draw. This is the vicinity map showing how the project is along, it's like a ribboned edge along the Green Wash. It follows that edge of the Green Wash, of the Santa Cruz, and just again, a perspective of large open space. To the right, you can see the Sasco and the existing CI-2 zoning that is already there. This is the land use and also gives a little portion of the aerial showing the existing land uses classifications under three, which is very low density, moderate low, and open space, and proposed is employment, general public facilities, and proposed open space. I thought I'll just give a perspective again on this, sorry for that. You can see that it is just south of one of the intensity, mid-intensity center, and to the right, a portion of that is already employment. This is the, the aerial map further showing the wash that is, you know, existing, the Green Wash, and the yellow line actually outlines its kind of ribbon along the Green This is the case map, which shows the boundary, the mailout boundary, again, further zooming into the ownerships also, shows BLM to the south, state land, large area, which is state land, surrounded by it, and there is portions of general rural and the CI-2 zoning on the This is the, again, further, I would say zoomed in portion of the project boundary. This actually shows the portions that have been requested for employment, open spaces, and, you know, general utilities, and this, I'm sorry. The portions that is shown in the northern portion, the central portion, which is showing the wash area that has been eliminated, and the portions that is the yellow has been kind of requested to move forward with the employment. There are portions that are going to be for the employment and general utilities, and a large portion that is part of the flood is going to remain as open space. Users requested, as stated earlier, is the data center, business park offices, warehouses, distribution. And to give further detail of this is the purple areas that is the employment. The blue is going to be the utilities, general public facilities and the utilities, and the rest of the portion is going to remain as open space. So those are the three classifications that have been requested for this project. The site conditions, project is along the Green Canal of the Santa Cruz Wash, as stated earlier. Parcels are within the extended planning area of the city of Eloy. Large portion of the site falls within a major flood zone A, and it's a flood-prone area called the Green Wash watershed. Portion of the project has been proposed, already has existing multi-use trail corridors that traverse along the parcels. Flood zone A indicates high risk of flooding with 1% annual chance of flooding known as the Hundred Year Flood. Southeast-west portion is undeveloped land, agricultural land, Zone GR. Large portion of the project area to the south abuts the existing proposed open space by the county. Again, giving a perspective from the wash perspective. One can see, again, the project area that has been shown along with the open space that is proposed open space to the south, existing open spaces, open spaces that is along the washes, the Santa Cruz Wash and the Green Canal, Green Wash that has that. So the trails that have been shown is the blue lines, and that is along those washes. Project areas have been identified and the boundaries along the wash. Some geological features also are there that need to be considered. It's a very unique area. It has water features, rich alluvial deposits, trails supporting riparian habitats, wildlife movement corridors, and unique habitat for the region that supports this natural environment. This is the drainage map, portion of the area within two firm panels, portion to the northwest green falls into the area prone to fertile land subsidence, and again, a very important aspect that needs to be considered. Further north of northwest portion of the project area shows earth fissures too. So again, a perspective of that regional drainage. Potential challenges to the site location, the drainage patterns are shown northwest to the southeast, to southeast. Portion of the area falls in the land subsidence areas with fissures. Additional surveys, geological reports, analysis is warranted. Site is subject to flooding and also subject to offsite flows. Detailed hydrological studies will be required. Improvements in flood zones will require floodplain use permits as requested and required by the public, Penal County Public Works. I'm open for any questions that the board may have.
Any questions on this project?
Mr. Chair, quick question.
Sure, go ahead.
So I'm looking at that, and it seems to be a rather odd area to put something like this. I see you're in agreeance. What, is there any, I see Baumgartner is the northern limit, the northern line of that. Is that the access point to this?
That's correct.
Because I know there's a lot of consternation about Sasco Road being used, and that has a whole bunch of problems just with the fact that that's right through a residential community, and I see this jumps over Sasco Road, so that's a...
That's true. As far as right-of-way is concerned, Baumgartner would be the northern boundary, and that would be the main access. Right-of-way is also through there, through the Sasco Road.
So during construction, they'd probably have to access through Sasco and then...
Right.
I mean, that's conjecture. I mean, I understand that, but that's just a problem.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, let me just, as I studied that whole thing, the transportation is going to have to be a key component of any kind of development on something this size, because if you're looking at that as being an employment, you're not going to take them down those roads to get them in and out of. So something like that that goes forward, I hope they have an extensive transportation plan on how they would access all of these points. And the flood is going to be something that would really concern me if I was trying to develop it, but I'm not.
Your employment thing is that most of that employment is a data center.
Yeah.
That's where that's, it's not really like people coming to...
No, I know, but still, you're just getting in and out of there.
Electrons running in and out, so just...
So this is, this is going to be rezoned as green energy for the whole entire thing?
No, no. This is going to be employment and general public facilities and services and open space, and the details of those will be flushed out moving forward.
Anyone else have any questions on this item? Can you see now? We'll move on to the next one.
Thank you.
Number five. Oh, I guess we're not going to say mortar. Oh, yeah, we are, okay.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board. Patrick Zaire Roberts, Senior Planner, presenting case PZPA 01225. This project is a major comprehensive plan amendment request for Silver Reef Energy LLC. They're requesting to amend the land use designation and redesignate 801 acres from very low density residential to green energy production. This will be for development of a utility scale solar facility and 150 wa, excuse me, of 150 watts for the photovoltaic solar and 200 megawatts of battery energy storage systems. The property is located six and a half miles southwest of Casa Grande, south of the I-8, within, unincorporated Penal County. The property owners are, as listed here below, a number of different agencies, Arizona, AZNY Investments LLC, the Solo, Daniel and Grace Living Trust, Philip W. Colasola Trust, Wesley Royball, Selma Partners LLC, Andrew J. and Lisa Salante, Husam Abu, Jacob Garmo, Moklis Shamami, excuse me, and JMS Ranch Properties LLC. The applicant for this case being Silver Reef Energy LLC. This is a map of the county showing the approximate location where the project's proposed. A vicinity map showing surrounding zonings, GR properties to the southwest, some CR2 to the northeast, with some CI-1 a little bit further on. This is a land use map showing the change from very low density residential and the proposal to change it to green energy production. If you see in the top left, you can see that the property is abutted by employment to the north, opens, major open space to the west, and largely fills in the very low density residential portion as depicted. This is an aerial map showing the surrounding topography. And a zoning map for identifying the notification buffer as well for affected neighbors. This is a preliminary site plan that the applicant has provided indicating the intended layout for the site with photovoltaic solar on the branches to the northwest and southeast, and best and substation layout towards the north of that central prong. And this is a map showing the affected neighbors and intended parcels for redesignation. So as a minus for consideration, the property has proximity to the I-8 corridor, and the property abuts BLM land to the west. The entire property possesses a flood zone X designation of minimal flood hazard. The subject is, the property is subject to offsite flows requiring some additional analysis as this goes forward. The proposal will develop a, or intends to develop a 150 watt, 150 megawatt solar, photovoltaic solar array and a 200 megawatt battery energy storage system on 801 acres. The property has direct access to a 230 kilovolt gentile line. The property is largely vacant with the nearest residences approximately 1,000 to 1,800 feet away from the nearest arrays. Our open space and trails has provided some comments with some concerns that we would like to see addressed as this project goes forward for additional consideration, notably about any potential riparian habitat impacts for the site, any potential mitigation for noxious weed impacts, a desire to retain desert soil crust in that ideal location as a biodiversity resource. Arizona Game and Fish Department guidelines in ensuring they're adhering to all requirements outlined by Game and Fish. Our flood control district has provided requests to see impact of waterways and to have those determined in a drainage report, and some items from staff to request some, some details of screening of visual impacts to neighboring residents. At this point, does the board have any questions of staff?
Any questions of staff? No. Thanks to item number six.
Good morning Chairman, Vice Chairman, Members of the Board. My name's Justin Mullis, Planner, Penal County. I'll be presenting to you all PZPA 1325, Project Midway. Project Midway, what they're proposing is a major comprehensive plan amendment from moderate low density residential to employment for the use of a proposed data center. It's generally located at the southwest corner of South Midway Road and Selma Highway. The owner is Selma and Midway LLC, and the applicant slash agent is Whitney Morris Bach LLC. Here's the location map. So you can see here it's amid the other projects on the I-8 corridor, right in approximate location to Casa Grande, Grande, with similar developments going on in those regions, in that region, my apologies. Here's that case map. You can see some of the surrounding zoning, SH, CAR, MHP, largely rural and agricultural uses in the area. Here's an aerial map, giving you a little bit of a better visual of the surrounding properties. Currently, you can see the designated site is undeveloped, as well as a fair deal of the property surrounding it, and there's some agricultural uses in the area as well. Here's a vicinity map showing you again, kind of a more zoomed out picture of the zoning, as well, you can see the proximity to Casa Grande in the north. And here's the mailout map showing you again vicinity of the project and the border of that mailout to surrounding properties. So here's again that site map. You can see it's currently undeveloped, as well as that utility pipeline that kind of runs right diagonally through the western portion of the site, but that's not being included in this proposal, specifically that parcel that has the main portion in the north and then triangular pieces of it, but the same parcel south of that pipeline. Here's the existing comprehensive plan map. You can see the current designation is that moderate low density residential, and you can also see its location directly north of Project Bella. They're proposing, as you can see by the change to purple, to employment. I will note that evergreen, the purple in the west that changed from the previous slide, that is the application that was withdrawn, so that's no longer being proposed to be changed. However, as you can see, there is still a good deal of that purple employment in the region, as well as that Project Bella directly south. Some of the site conditions, the project is northeast and is not in the influence of that Green Wash that we had seen in prior projects. And in addition, jumping down to three as far as flood, the project is within flood zone X, which indicates minimal risk of flooding. The parcels are within the extended area of the planning, the planning area of the city of Casa Grande, as well as the property is south and west of the property, or sorry, south and west of the property is undeveloped land, largely agricultural, Zone GR, and then the north and east of the property is largely undeveloped as well, used primarily for agricultural land uses. There's CAR, MHP, CR2, and SH zoning for the surrounding parcels. Any question from the board at this time?
Being in my district, I'll tell you the one question that will come up, this for the applicant to know, the water use of the data center, because it's been a big, Bella had to demonstrate, you know, their, how they weren't going to affect, or they're going to use less water than the farmer. Now you put both of these combinations together though, so I want to say that that will be one of the questions asked going forward.
Yes, sir. And I can speak to that a little bit. I've talked with the applicant, and they've told me that it's the plan of the owner to limit their search pool of potential end users to only those that would use air cooling as their method of cooling. So the primary water usages per the applicant would be the landscaping and any restrooms and additional...
That's good information, yeah.
And I'll be able to provide more information on water usage.
Sure. I know we get too far into the details, but I can just tell you what came of the last project out there. So you should be aware. Did you have something?
Water.
Anybody else?
Water.
Okay. Data center, water.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning again Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board. Patrick Zaire Roberts, Senior Planner, presenting case PZPA 01425 for the Griffin Energy Project. This is a proposal from Rose Law Group requesting a major comprehensive plan amendment to redesignate two...
2,685.58 acres from moderate low density residential to proposed open space and green energy production. Also a general public facilities and services and proposed open space. This is all for a utility scale solar project with a battery energy storage system and a potential gas-fired power plant. Location for this project is between the Santa Rosa Wash and the Green Wash on both sides of the, of the I-8 corridor in the unincorporated portion of Penalt County. The property owners are Anderson Road AD LLC, BW Land Investments LLC, and Jordi Hacienda Inc. and Stanfield 1295 LLC. The applicants for this project are the Griffin Energy LLC and Rose Law Group. This is a map showing the approximate location in the county where this, this project is proposed and a vicinity map showing the subject parcels and surrounding layout. This is a map showing the proposed change from the moderate low density residential designation to green energy production and listed land use changes. An aerial map showing the proposed layout of the site. And a map showing the surrounding zonings and affected notification buffers. One item of concern that staff had presented to the applicant is that a large portion of this project is impacted by a flood zone A designation of increased flood hazard, ultimately requiring some additional discussion and pursuit of mitigation. We did receive notice from, from them that they're, they're underway of preparing some documents to help understand how this project would function within this flood zone, including some, some additional open space that's being proposed. This is a map showing the proposed layout for their designations. And a map showing the surrounding context of the comprehensive plan designation between two activity centers to the east and west and directly abutting the Project Bella gas-fired power plant to the east as you can see in that blue polygon. And this is a map showing the ownerships of the property. So some items for consideration, the project is located near the I-8 corridor and the butts the proposed Project Bella gas-powered plant to the east. The majority of the property is impacted by that flood zone A designation of increased flood hazard that they will need to address. The property is impacted by the Santa Rosa Wash and the Green Wash and has a proposed regional trail connection and repairing areas identified by Arizona Game and Fish Department. The proposal is for development of a power generation facility including photovoltaic solar, gas-fired generation and best energy storage. The project is largely vacant with some scattered residential properties central to the project and abutting to the south. We received the following, the following comments for consideration at this point. Open space and trail comments for repairing habitat impacts, noxious weed mitigations and potential regional trail impact. Discussions of the green wash and Santa Rosa wash impacts in this location and Arizona Game and Fish Department guidelines that need to be addressed, including impact of flood zone discharge to be determined by drainage report later on in their discussions. And again, staff is also requesting some details of visual screening and to mitigate some impacts to residential properties. At this point, does the board have any questions of staff?
Explain to me regional trails.
So regional trails are a feature that the county kind of puts in place to try and create a network of open space that can be utilized by residents. It's something that the, the applicant would need to address and make sure that that open space would be able to connect a future trail corridor for enjoyment of, of residents in the county.
I guess my real question is, do all of the landowners currently know that they have a regional trail running through their property?
At this time, it's, it's a feature that's included as part of the comprehensive plan, but we can certainly ensure that they're notified as well.
I've run into that regional trail problem before, so I think that that, I, I think it goes more to the current ownership of the property because it does, can, it can have mitigating factors to, to try and either, you know, market your land or use your land in the future, so. I don't know that I'm favor that policy, but anyway, I think that's my biggest question on that one. Anybody else have any questions?
I just have a comment, I'm looking, I'm looking at this and, and I'm seeing them all side by side by side and I'm seeing a Coolidge problem come up here later. I understand that it's a great natural gas line area and it's got 500 KB, 230 KB lines running through there, but I see this becoming the Coolidge issue in the future.
Go back to that map. Kind of shows right, right there. The gray hashed area is, is that developed, is there?
Or is that the solar?
Those are some existing solar panels.
Oh, those are existing solar, okay. Okay, need better glasses. Anybody else have any questions?
Well, I, I guess the comment I've got is, is with, with some of the high-tech stuff that we're trying to bring into the area, power is going to be a big issue for us, I think. And so, and there, at this point in time, we only have a couple of resources to go from and that's gas-powered and solar at this point. So when I look at this and I look at where, I know when I first came on board was to bring employment here. You know, 85% of those people when I first came on board at Santan Valley would leave this area to go to work. And so I'm trying to, my goal and objective has always been trying to reverse that, keep the employment here and which would improve the quality of life for these individuals, so. I mean, I, to your point, you're right, but it's really the only two sources that we have available today.
Yeah, that's, that's why we want to bring the providers in and really give a better understanding.
And I appreciate that because I think that's vital to all of this as we move forward.
And, and, well, I know enough about this I-8 corridor, you showed a thing that had two power centers, two red dots. Yeah, I can tell you right now, those, those will be purple. I mean, that old corridor along there is, is ripe and for, for industry and manufacturing and so.
What Supervisor Goodman just said, but you also, we have to walk a fine line between bringing in employment and business, but some of the power sources may actually cause, may cost employment and future growth too if you put it in the wrong place. Just look at Coolidge and look at the project we're going to talk about coming up. How it could just damage the area for years to come. So we do need the power, but we also need to put this power in the, in the right place.
Chair, any, yeah, sure. Fire protection and water. Very important to me. So I just want to make sure that the applicant knows that when we keep moving forward, I need to know about the fire protection, so.
We'll ensure that's part of the future discussions.
Can I add one more thing?
Yeah, sure.
Aesthetics, 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 aesthetics. You cannot look like a pigsty. Cannot look like a pig with lipstick on it, that's it, end of story.
We got a big beautiful wall.
That's right.
All right, any other questions? Or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Breaks to item number eight.
Good morning again Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board. Patrick Zaire Roberts, Senior Planner, presenting on behalf of Glenn Bach for PZPA 01525. This is a project for an energy generation technology campus. The project is for conversion of a moderate low density residential area to employment for a proposed energy generation and technology campus. This is a property located northeast of West Lewis Johnson Drive and Arizona State Route 347. This is just west of the Nissan Technical Center. The property owner in this case is Arizona RR Ranches LLC and the applicant in this case is Rose Law Group. This is a location map showing the approximate location for consideration. Case map showing the existing zoning and surrounding zoning context for the proposed amendment. An aerial map depicting the properties in question. And a vicinity map showing surrounding designations for zoning with a number of residential zone properties to the south and west and some industrial properties to the east. I believe to the north of the site is Auction Indian Reservation as well. And this is a map showing the notification buffer for affected surrounding neighbors. This is a map of the proposed generation campus that's been provided by the applicant. As you can see, there are some additional features they've identified in this area, including the Nissan Technical Center to the east, to the northeast, there is the, a future best system, a proposed Frontier Water, excuse me, Frontier West Technology Campus to the north of the site and to the southwest, a El Paso Natural Gas Plant. This is a map showing the surrounding existing comprehensive plan designations. As you can see, the site in question is converting from moderate low density residential and to the east of the site is employment with some activity centers to the east and then to the southwest. I believe the dotted lines are indicating some route, some proposed routes in this location. Some traffic routes for Miller Road and Corson Road and Teal Road. And this is an additional map depicting some of those additional features that we discussed previously surrounding the site and the proposed development to redesignate to employment. So some items for consideration, the parcels are within the extended planning area of the city of Maricopa. So we are hoping for some, some comments from City of Maricopa for how they envision this to cooperate with their general plan area. The project is within the flood zone X designation, which means there's minimal risk of flooding in this location. The properties, to the north of the property is an undeveloped land designated agricultural and within the Auction community. Again, hoping for some agency outreach. To the east, south and west of the property are undeveloped properties, generally agricultural but zone CR3, CB1, CB2, C1, mixed dwelling or more multi, multiple dwelling and CI1 light industrial. At this point, does the board have any questions of staff?
Just out of curiosity, do we have policies in place that the decommissioning of these? I know we've talked about this before, any of these solar facilities or? And I, I'm not sure I'm referring to this particular project, but just in general.
At a land use level, I don't believe we do have any requirements for decommissioning plans this early on in the process, but it is an item we request at the zoning level when they propose for rezoning for solar development, energy best system that has a proposed lifespan expiration, if you will.
Okay. That's it. Everybody down the road there.
Again, mine will be water, fire, and then the outreach to Auction. So the meeting that they was there didn't go very well, but I know there's more issues that got to come up in the aspect of seeing how this is going to be laid out because we had four different discussions with four different people that day and this is going to need to go back out to the community and Auction.
Understood, we will push for outreach in those, in those neighborhoods.
I think the activity centers don't fall in that area and that's kind of a separate thing. We've really got to amend that map that we have out there. But I think you have Auction, City of Maricopa and Alice Johnson. Who's called me? Anything else? Okay, number nine.
Thank you.
Good afternoon Chairman, Vice Chairman, Supervisors. My name is Valentin Painchenko, Planner, here to present to you case PZPA 01025, Silver King Solar. This is a proposal to amend land use and redesignate nine, about 9,000 acres of the land from moderate low density residential to green energy production for solar generation facility, battery energy storage system, substantial station and generation tie line. It's located southwest of Florin Junction and I-60, south of Queen Creek Wash, north east of Town of Florence and five miles to the north of East Arizona Farms. The owner is a state trust land and the applicant agent Silver King Solar LLC, Dave Longren. This is a location in the northern part of the county. This is general map of the proposal, project boundaries. It's a proposed land use green energy, about 9,000 acres. There are existing around 2,000 acres of green energy production to the south. In that bottom right corner, you will see in white, that starts that large to southern acres. And there are also existing 750 acres of green energy production to the west outside of this map. Here is a zoning, generally is GR, with CR3 on the southwest corner for the private land, mostly surrounded by state land, trust lands. Here's a main and surroundings features for this project. The nearest residential area located two miles to the southwest of the project boundaries. There are also a planted 100 feet county right of way. It's in green, it crosses a project area from the west to the, to the east. It's only planted, there is nothing existing and county engineer will be, there will be discussion with county engineer about abandoning or using of that right of way for the project on reason case stage. There are also planted freeway corridor to the west of the project in dark. There is existing substation, Florence Substation on the northeast corner in red star. That's existing and in purple star, you will see the proposed substation and BSS. So they will be connected to the existing one. That's also located in the vicinity of Conservation Opportunity Area, which is Queen Creek Wash to the north of that project area and that's Conservation Area, it's not a part of the project. It's nearby and it might have influence to the project area, but it's outside of the project areas. Here's also a map of existing activity centers that might benefit in the future of, from, from this project in red circles or colored circles to the south, some employment areas to the south and that's Florence and Queen Creek cities to also on this map. Here is a drainage pattern, as you see, there is a wash to the north, Queen Creek Wash, and there are some smaller washes inside the project. There is, might be some substantial repair and habitat that transacts the project, but it's mostly related to the Queen Creek Wash and it can occur on this area as well with wildlife connectivity. It might be also important for this area, but the more, the major concern is about Queen Creek Wash, not this area and the final report from Penalt County Open Space and Park will be ready before the public hearings. So we will get a more detailed report from our division regarding. So, we will get a more detailed report from our division regarding that part. But the most, the major concern here, it's only Queen Creek Wash that's outside of the project areas. And there is some original multi-use trail that just sent the project area, and there also will be provided some guidance how to develop those trails, and those trails will be needed to be developed by the applicant at the end. Here is general electrical infrastructure that's already exist in this place. The main feature is existing a Florin Substation in the northern east corner. Here's the land use with employment in purple, activity sensors in red, and MLDR in yellow. That's a major part of surrounding areas. Here's also hydrology map provided by the applicant, and here also, you will see in purple, that's main smaller washes within the project area, and applicant already providing buffer along those washes. There's also some areas of avoidance that will not be buildable and other areas that will be buildable in green. And there are also a railroad that crosses the project from northeast to southwest in the bottom side of the project areas. That's not a part of this proposal. So, there was a proposal submitted timely, named Silver King Solar. It completed the sixty-day agency review, as mentioned previously by Sagita, about the timeline of comprehensive plan amendments. That was for the green energy production, for this case, solar. And then, on the July thirtieth, we received an updated application with updated name, project name, it's Silver King Energy Center. That proposal also include not just green energy production, which is now six thousand six hundred sixty acres approximately, and it's also include general public facility for thermal generation and energy generation for two thousand two hundred thirty acres. It's basically, I will show the next map. It's missed sixty-day review period that was previously assigned to all other cases. There is also provided, because it's a state land trust lands, and state land department provided authorization form, and authorization form included only green energy production in that letter, and previously completed neighborhood meeting also was only related to green energy production. So, that's items to consider for the Board. But there will be three public hearings ahead of time, which is Citizen Advisory Committee, PNC, and BOS, and we still have time to make a public notices for those, including the updated information. And here is a map of proposed updates with green energy north of railroad and general public facility to the south of railroad. It's to, for Board discussion if the Board wishes to continue with updated request by the applicant or continue with what was originally submitted by the deadline. Is there any questions from the Board to this stuff?
I have one quick question, and I'll, because I, I'm just kind of, and this may take some homework on staff's part, okay? On state trust land, there's a lease. How much of that lease money goes to the schools? Because, or does any of it go? I don't, I really don't know for sure, but I think there's a formula, and I would be, I'm curious, because there's other state lease projects out there that are coming along, and I want to know if it is benefiting our schools.
Okay. No, that's all.
Supervisor Sertie, you want anything, say anything?
I think it's too early. I mean, it's got to go through the other three processes, but as a representative of the people, it's about ninety-nine to one against this project because it's just in the wrong place.
Okay. So.
So, in general, when Supervisor Goodman brought up the decommissioning, it was stated that it's going to happen after the fact. Shouldn't we be getting a decommissioning plan on all these projects during this process before we rezone it? And then, to me, that's something that's super important to the people, that we know in what's going to happen to this land in twenty, thirty, forty years, or whatever the number is. So, I, I just thought of that when Chairman Goodman said that, because, I'm sorry.
Don't do that to me.
Supervisor Goodman, the bottom line is, is that I think all of them need to make sure that we know the decommissioning plan in advance, since we do not have one as a county. I think that that's probably one that we should be putting out in front of everything, so just want to bring that point up. Then, of course, fire, water is all important too, so.
Don't forget aesthetics.
And, and no lipstick on a pig.
I, I do want to make a comment too, back to my question on the water use, and that's not on this particular project, but on the data ones, was mentioned, it was air-cooled. Now, technically, I found out that there's one of these data centers, they cool it, quote unquote, with swamp coolers, which would be air-cooled, but using a lot of water. So, be specific on the actual method in which these things are cooled, because you could technically say that's air-cooled, and I don't want, just follow my, my train of thought there, staff? Okay. So, anyway, that's what I had to say on that. Anything else?
Well, I think, I think I'd add one more thing, with some of these projects that have come before us, and I know that's early on in the, the process, but I think some of our regional routes need to be looked at and evaluated with these projects, and making sure that the applicant's aware of, of what type of roads and infrastructure that needs to be built around them or even through them to help make the flow easier, better for our citizens. So, I think that's vital, that that's also discussed in the process as well.
Chairman, I have one more thing.
Sure.
I've noticed, especially in my area, that when letters gets, again, this is just in, in general, the letters that are sent out to the, the area generally only gives them seven to eight days, if we're lucky, especially in rural areas, that they're getting time to come to these meetings, so the public meetings. So, I don't know if we need to change that and go out three weeks in advance, four weeks, but literally by the time they're mailed, which they have two weeks in advance, by the time they get those letters, it's not leaving people time to show up. And I've had that in three incidences already so far. So, I would ask that's something that we would probably need to change. Give more time for the letters to get out because of slow, you know, slow mail, how it's done, how is it really getting out? So, I just want to point that to all of the projects in general. It doesn't matter if it's housing, doesn't matter in general. Everything in general for planning and zoning, it needs to go out sooner.
Is that in statute? I don't know, we may need to look at that, but that's a good call. Yeah, okay. All right. Anything else on the comprehensive plan amendments? I have one last item, item number ten.
I have, Board, I have a question about your direction, what, what to do with requests from my applicant to update the application, because they, they are adding general facility.
Well, we have to give you direction, because we can't vote.
And the question would be, what is general facility?
So, just to give a perspective of this question, the sixty-day period that has passed and the public participation process, this project only stated Silver Kings as solar project. We do not have comments from any of those agencies regarding the changes or this project that has amended. So, it has missed that part. The other part is that we do not have authorization from the state land stating that they were okay to move forward with the solar and general public facilities. The neighborhood meeting report that has been submitted was only for the solar. So, staff would like to get a direction if the Board is willing to move forward with the amended proposal by the applicant.
So, stop. How do we give direction without appearing to have voted?
Yes, Chairman, members of the Board, so, because this is a work session, obviously, we're not talking about specific direction, but if the Board has any comments they'd like to make in terms of preference about how something would proceed or how it would be viewed depending on which route it goes, that could be done, if done delicately, otherwise...
I mean, I just, we're walking a fine line here.
Very fine.
Very fine. So, I guess you can have an opinion.
I have an opinion.
You have an opinion?
I do.
Is it a short one?
Well, I think to, to the point that Sagita was saying, I mean, one thing that the state land department has always emphasized is that they need to be at the table on these things, and if they haven't given approval for those type of amendments, I think that they're vital in that, they're the landowner.
I would have a similar opinion. But, yeah, I, I, I don't know how they can go forward with, without, with, out the component of the state land being involved. I don't see how they can.
So, Mr. Chair, I would say, you know, if it were my property, I'd want to know.
That's a nice opinion. I don't know, can you get direction from these comments that we just laid out?
I will work with my applicant to get any approval or comments from Arizona State Department regarding those updates, and then move forward.
You bring that, you let us know about how that turns out.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good job.
Okay.
Oh, which, yeah, that was a good idea.
Yeah, it was a good idea, Val had, absolutely.
Item number ten on the agenda is the discussion, and this is requested by me. On the Santan incorporation, we are, at least I have received emails requesting interview in this, in, you know, in a sense of, from potential people that would be like filing applications to be a city council person. I, I would suggest that, I can't make any of you do this, but I would suggest that we don't interact with anybody until there's, there's applications filed and a process set in place. And I do want to announce today that we will have a calendar and a process laid out. We hope to present at the December twenty-seventh, I mean, I'm sorry.
December, whoa.
December, that's probably really about when we'll be ready. No, I'm sorry, August.
We really need to think about this.
August twenty-seventh, a meeting that will lay out step by step when applications will be available as we go forward. I just think to keep a level playing field, that interaction with individuals that may be seeking those would be improper because you might not get to talk to everybody, and we should just keep it all in, open and out in front of us. That's my suggestion.
Well, along with that, that's what I've been, I haven't taken any, any appointments. I've said that this is a decision that all five of us are going to have to make, and so, and I, and I've told everybody, first of all, we really can't make a decision until it's canvassed at that point.
I've used that one too.
And then, I talked about how, what that process may be, but it'll be up to all five of us.
And I would also point out that it is yours and my district, and that we have all these applicants, what committee, we have to consider what committee would be looking at them. I mean, beforehand to say, hey, you know, we.
Yeah, and, and a lot of this is tied to statute, and we don't, we really don't know. I mean, staff's diving into it right now, and they're trying to, to assemble the step-by-step process that we'll go through for this, for this function.
It'll be similar to the legislative.
Right, right, right.
A little bit.
And, and to be honest with you, I'm anxious, I think all of us, all five of us are trying, are anxious to get through the process as quick as possible.
Yeah, we're not dragging our feet, but we are going to be for sure that when we present something, that we don't have to come back and amend it or change it, that it's set and we move forward with it from there.
Sounds, sounds good. Thank you.
So, I hope everybody's okay with that. And with no other items before us, this meeting's adjourned.